Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our general government meeting with regard to stormwater. And two people have already signed up to talk who don't, are not here. We're waiting for some other council people, hopefully they'll show up, but we can go ahead and get going. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Hammack.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes, absent. Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Smith, absent. Mayor Troutman.
Here. Okay. I think that what we do is turn it over to Mr. Adam Lancaster, and you can get going, is that right? Okay. Would you go ahead, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So tonight I have with me Tom and James with Atkins Engineering, and I have Brian with Icon Engineering, all consultants that are working on our capital improvement projects for stormwater. So tonight, we really, we are moving, we are moving along with our capital improvement projects for stormwater, and we've reached some important milestones, and also have a, what I might call a few hiccups that we want to discuss tonight. So we thought it was a good time to get together with you folks and just kind of let you know where we're at, get some, maybe some general direction on how to proceed from here, and then answer any questions that you may have, or give you more information. So we'll start with, I think, what is the easy one, and that's North Ninth Street. North Ninth Street was selected as one of our capital improvement projects because it, that was chosen, oh, I'm sorry, I remissed, but I want to also let you know that I also invited the original stormwater committee members who helped select the projects, and so there's a good number of them in the audience tonight as well, who may have some input as well, so, sorry about forgetting about that. North Ninth Street, so it was chosen because it has very important implications for both stormwater and for our 2A street project. It's probably the number one complaint we get for the streets, and we've known for years now that it has an issue with stormwater. So this gave us an opportunity to move that to the top of the list for the 2A and tackle a number of problems we have there. And then earlier this year, you guys had directed us to bundle that work together as one project for stormwater, water main replacement, and street reconstruction. So the survey has been complete, completed for that project, and design is underway, and we still intend to have that out to bid for construction very early in 2020. So that is the status of that, unless you have any questions on that, really nothing else going on with that as far as, yes?
Well, our bids have come in really high for Wolf Park and Dawson, and it sounds like on East Roads in Maine, too. Is there an anticipation that the same thing can happen with North Ninth Street as well? Their money's not going to go as far as we hoped.
It is possible, and we'll get into a little bit more of that as we go into the other projects. Yes?
I see here you're talking about, I must have missed this, but we're talking, it says that it's going, the pipe is going from Highway 50 to Mystic.
Yes.
And I thought we were going from the river.
No, what we found was, we backed out of that a little bit because we knew, we knew right off the bat that what was originally planned for the river, from the river north, was going to be too expensive, and also entailed state highway, which we knew was going to be extremely expensive, a railroad crossing, and so forth. And so when we decided to back off of the 100-year capacity storm sewer and match what was existing as a fairly new structure in 115, which is a 36-inch storm sewer, which currently goes to the, to US 50. And so it was decided when the committee was meeting on how to address that, we would start at US 50 with a 36-inch culvert. Knowing, knowing that it didn't have the ultimate capacity that we might have been looking for, for floodplain reduction, but knowing it was a huge, a huge improvement over what's existing. Yeah.
The 36 inches from Highway 50 to the river.
Correct.
Right, okay. And it's fairly new.
Yep. Okay. Good. So the next discussion, or project, that we had was Dawson Ranch and Wolf Park culverts. So that entailed the replacement installation of culverts of different sizes and lengths at 13, well, we planned on 13 different sites within those two subdivisions. And final design was completed in August. It took a little longer to get that design out than we had anticipated due to some survey work that we had to do, it was fairly difficult getting the potholing done for the utilities, which we'll talk about a little later, is one of the issues we have with, we had with both design and construction. And then we put it out to bid on September 6th and opened those bids on the 26th. We only had two eligible bidders that showed up at the pre-bid meeting, and then we only received one bid, and that bid was received from Avalanche Excavating for a total of $1.7 million. The construction estimate that was done by Icon was $975,000, and the original budget estimate that we had when we did the COP work was 867 less the, less the design work. So obviously, well beyond what we had anticipated. And so we did interview the contractors that were involved in the bid, and we got together with Icon and discussed our opinions of why the bids may come in the way it did, why we didn't get very many bids. And then we also sat down with representatives of the HOA for Dawson Ranch, and then also, I personally spoke with the representative of Wolf Park to kind of discuss options and recommendations and those sorts of things. So I had put together, basically, an assessment of that and a memo, and sent that out. And so that's what we kind of want to talk to tonight, is what we think happened, where we want to go with it, and, and kind of get a, an affirmation from, from you as a group.
Thanks, Adam. I have two people, one from Mike Kramowski and Paul Fisher, both from, one is from, Mike is from Dawson Ranch, another is from Wolf Park. Would they, would you want to have them come up now, or should we wait to address it later?
I think, let's, let's, if you, if you don't mind, let's go through the findings and recommendations, and then we'll have them come up and kind of speak to this.
Okay. All right, good. Yep, I got a thumbs up.
All right, sounds good. So the first thing we found out that was, we originally had given 75 days for construction. Our intent there was to confine the work to this year and have it done within what was 2019's construction season. What we heard from the contractors was that was not near enough time, and as we discussed it, we, we knew that there was no reason, just because of the type of, the color of funding that we have for the COPs, there was no need to do this project quickly. Really, the only confinement would be that we don't want to obviously do it during the monsoon season or something late summer. So one of the recommendations we have is 150 days for construction with a stop allowance for any time they may have when they're waiting on stuff that's beyond their control, like utility work. There was some concern that some of the utilities, because there are some relocations required, that they could get in there and take a fair amount of time and then affect that contract time. We would then still have a limitation on how long they could be at any particular site, so, so that they weren't in there, you know, opening up a trench in front of somebody's house and leaving it indefinitely for the 150 days. So that's the recommendation we have for that, and the contractors have echoed that as well. The other thing that we found out, and this is something that we've also discussed with other entities up the front range, is that right now, all the contractors are currently overcommitted. Finding labor and equipment and getting it mobilized to the right places is really hard and difficult right now. There was an example that one of the contractors gave where they were just trying to find a crane contractor, as a subcontractor, to do some of the work, and, and they couldn't get any, they couldn't even get any calls back for that work. So we think that if we rebid that late this year, early 2020, when still during the wintertime, which is a good time to do this type of construction, as well as contractors are trying to keep their crews busy during the wintertime, when a lot of the highway work is completed, may get us some more interest. And also, we could, to attract some of the, maybe some bidders from out of town, we could make the, the pre-bid meeting non-mandatory, so that they could, it's, it's not a complicated construction process that necessarily has to be discussed in a mandatory meeting, so we could do that as well. And then also extend the time for the bid preparation. We were, again, we were probably a little overzealous in trying to get this awarded, and didn't have a very long bid time, which also affects the pricing. The third, the third thing we found out was, a huge part of the cost was hauling the material off-site that was excavated from the trenches. So two, two, two things came out of that finding, was that, one, we, we think we can find a, either a city-owned or privately-owned site within the subdivision that's closer, that they would not have the long haul for the trucks, where we could deposit that material. And we could also allow an ordinary backfill material, which is basically the in-situ, the onsite stuff, to be reused onsite rather than hauled off entirely. So that's probably one of the bigger cost savings that we can, we can deal through the project. And already, I know that Mike, Mike Kramowski from Dawson Ranch has indicated that he might be able to put us in touch with some private property owners that would be interested in some fill within the site. The fourth finding was, we found the mobilization cost for individual sites was really excessive. Sometimes some of those lump sum pricings, like mobilization, or demo, or things like that, is kind of where contractors kind of throw in a lot of their, I'll say fluff, fluff dollars or overhead. And we didn't really see, eventually, the way we were anticipating the way they were constructing, we thought that that may be beneficial to have that. After seeing how it was bid, we think we probably ought to just, the subdivision is, the site for the subdivision is small enough, that is probably appropriate just to have one mobilization cost to the subdivision instead of each individual site, and so that will probably cut down on that pricing as well. The fifth thing was, we are going underneath sanitary sewer at two of the sites, and that was going, to do that safely was probably going to require a bypass of the sanitary sewer, which is like a 24-hour pumping process during the time that they're doing the work. And so that was adding a lot to the cost. So the suggestions on that were either delete those two sites that involve that, or we could maybe, as a city, work with the sanitation district to possibly get some assistance in that. And preliminarily, it seems like that might be a possibility. The sixth finding was, the lead, lead time and expense of the concrete box culvert. So again, it takes a while to get something like that ordered and constructed. The 150-day allowance could take care of that issue, and then also, we're, we're paying a markup on top of that. And so something we've done in the past is, the city has pre-purchased the box culvert, and then, and then the contractor installs it, and so then we, we might save some time there, which helps that cost as well as the markup on, on the material. And then finally, we feel like the current scope is probably still going to be over-budget, and so we still, even making all these other changes that I've just discussed, we probably still need to trim the scope a little bit. And that was primarily our meeting, the purpose of our meetings with the HOA representatives was to discuss their priorities and where we might trim those. And we've gotten feedback from all those representatives on how we may do that, to trim the sites. Obviously, if the, if the bids come in good, then we can add the sites back in, but we think it's, we think it's better to, to trim it upfront now, instead of trying to do it after a bid is open, so. That's what our findings were and recommendations, and now we can hear from Mike and Paul, if you'd like.
Okay, Mike, do you want to come up then, or, or did you change your mind?
Name is Mike Kramowski, I live up at 463 Green Horn in Dawson Ranch. I'm the HOA chair for Dawson Ranch. First, the only real thing I'd like to do is thank Adam and staff for coming up with these options that should make it a lot easier for the contractors. I would also like to emphasize the need to get contractors outside of the area, so we can get as much of this work done as possible, rather than having one contractor, because he's local, be the only person that's going to bid. And that's all I really wanted to say.
And the question then is that, we didn't just restrict it to, did we restrict just the local contractors, or?
We, we didn't, and we even advertised statewide, but again, maybe the timing is just wrong.
Okay.
We might need to do some, some personal outreach to some particular companies. The other company that did show up at the pre-bid was from out of town.
Can, can you disclose why they decided not to bid?
So they, they, yeah, they were part of this discussion on these findings, and, and they had issues with a number of those things that we just discussed, you know, the timing and some of those things.
You think they might bid the next time?
They have already said they're interested still.
Interested, okay.
Yep.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
I have, I have a question for Mike. Mike, I know that you've been really deeply involved in the stormwater task force, and the committee, and the selections, and working with the residents on getting their permission to even have the work done on their property, and the HOA has really promoted that this project was going to start at the end of October. What has been the feedback from residents with this delay?
Severe disappointment. Anger toward, toward the folks in this room. Having, not having done anything for 20 years, and looking like it may not happen again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there a Paul Fisher in the house? Oh, there he is. You're from Wolf Park, right?
That's correct.
They're letting you stay there, huh?
Paul Fisher, 299 Savage Loop, Wolf Park. I'm the treasurer of the HOA board, and have the chairman and another board member with me this evening also. I worked with Adam and Brian to develop the two crossings, one on Shiloh, one on Fenris. We've chose to give up the one on Shiloh and proceed with the one on Fenris. That's part of the reduction of the scope that has been discussed. One thing, Brian, I've talked to Adam about this, but I don't know if you're aware or not, but the delineation between the two pipes, the rock delineation to separate the flow from the outlet, all shown on the prints was a splash pad. There was supposed to be a rock delineator in there to split that flow, so I'd like to see that corrected. And Adam and Tony have both told me that the ditch from Fenris down to the pipe that goes under Ford Road will be cleaned out, and I just double-checked with Tony here this evening, it'll, they're going to take care of it yet this year, hopefully before the end of the year. Glenda DeBecker sends us a letter every year and tells us that we have to clean out our ditches, but the city hasn't cleaned out their ditch, so that's, that's kind of a pet peeve. That's, that's a small thing. I think, I'd like to also give you an alternate way to bid this. I personally, of course, I've been on the stormwater committee, and years ago, I was the public works director for the city, so we, and, and Mike has aptly said for 20 years, Wolf Park and, and Dawson Ranch have had to live with that. The people on the north side of 50 have lived with it for generations. I would like to, because of the way the bids came in, I would like to see you bid North Ninth Street prior to rebidding Dawson Ranch and Wolf Park. I think that would allow you the opportunity and provide you the information that would tell you that the number of dollars available, and the number of dollars it was actually going to take to do the work, might require that we cut the, or trim the scope even further. The other two projects are the WPA ditch and the Abbey drainage, and they are aptly just as important as North Ninth Street. So we, you're not, and Ashley, you stated it well, we may not be able to do as much as we planned or had hoped for, so I'd like for us to be real careful how we spend the $8 million. So really, that's all I have to say tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate the fact that you've included us and want to do something for the residents of Wolf Park. You all know that we pay double. We pay the stormwater fee, and we're required to take care of all the ditches in there, and all the stormwater ponds with our HOA fees. So 90-some percent of our HO fees go, go to that. And, no, I, I wanted to say one other thing, and I've lost my train of thought, but, so I'm going to stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul. Adam, Mike, would you like to go forward on any comments on that?
So before we move on to the, the next capital improvement projects, I guess, what we're kind of looking for is just a nod forward as far as, all right, I mean, obviously, we probably still want to rebid the Dawson Ranch project with the findings, so we're looking, you know, from an affirmation for that, if that's what you'd like us to do, and then in light of what Mr. Fisher just said, whether you want us to do that after the Ninth Street bid in the springtime or not. That's kind of what we're looking for tonight, is just, how would you, how would you like us to proceed?
Mr. Meisner.
Well, a couple of questions or comments. Do you, do you currently, relative to, to item number five, do you have a couple of recommendations in terms of the two sites that would be, that would, that would not be included in the initial bid?
So yes, one of the, one of the sites that we've already chosen, right, Brian, is, one of the sites that we already chose with the Dawson Ranch HOA is one of those sites to eliminate. So one of those we would take out of the bid right away, and, and then the other, the other, like I said, I, I'd like to have some further discussion with the sanitation district on maybe assisting with that.
So the one that's taken out, is that the one that Paul mentioned, or no?
No, so that, that one is, so we looked at taking out two culverts, two sites within Dawson Ranch and the one in Wolf Park.
So three.
Three, three total sites. We're looking at reducing right now, yeah.
Well, it seems to me like that the concept of the, the original committee was to take the eight, or eight and a half million, whatever it was, and divide that throughout the, the city to try to give, to try to address each area, knowing at the time, we were going to work with budget dollars that you kind of backed up to kind of meet the dollars that we have.
Right.
And my philosophy is still the same, that we still, we've allocated a certain amount of dollars to each area, and we need to work with those dollars and take that project as far as we can with each of those areas. That may mean that we only get to college, or to Rudd on Ninth Street, but it is what it is. The dollars are limited. I, I think if we've got an opportunity to move forward with at least one project, and that being Dawson, then I think we try to stay on track with something.
Ms. Smith?
I would like to echo that sentiment as well. It was our messaging through this whole process that we would try and benefit every section of the city, so everyone could get a piece of the pie. But I also want to echo the sentiments of disappointment and aggravation, because this committee that's in this audience, we worked really hard to make sure that that $8 million was stretched to its fullest potential, and even with the changes that you've now made to the bid, we're still a huge shortfall, and so our word and our conversations with our committee members is now, now we're lacking that trust and confidence for us moving forward, a strong leadership for addressing stormwater, and so that's, that's a really tough one for me to swallow. But I do want to make sure that we do whatever we can to, like I said, make every single one of those projects actually get some tangible results, and, and let's move forward with it and do the best we can. I've, I hate to see us cutting projects, because we have, we have, that's, $8 million is all we have to get anything done, and it's really heartbreaking.
Mr. Hammack, do you have anything to add here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, a couple of things. One, just, just kind of, on a side, on the cement, on the box culverts, how much money are we talking about spending to get, get those pre-constructed, to have on hand for the actual work?
Yeah, I don't have that on the top of my head tonight, sorry.
Are we, is it, is it, I mean, is it $100,000, $200,000 more? Do you have some idea?
$250,000?
Quarter of a billion, mm-hmm. Okay. But it's still part of the bid, I mean, not part of the bid.
Right.
It's part of the project.
Yeah. It's part of the total amount, yes.
Right, part of the total amount. Okay, and then, but, but then, to bring it back to what, what pretty much everyone up here is talking about, the, if, if push comes to shove, and, and our money is not going to go as far as we thought, the, what, what do you think is the, you know, I've got, my, my personal thought is that if we're, if we're going to be doing, you know, North Ninth, that we ought to, that, that probably should go through, you know, to completion, if we can. If there's other places that we can cut, or cut back on scope, are we, do we have places like that? I mean, it's the, we're, if we're going to be juggling resources here, we've got four projects, basically have Dawson and Wolf Park, and the other, the other two, the Rhodes Avenue Channel and the WPA Channel, and the North Ninth. Do we, do we have opportunities there to, to cut back scope, to be able to, to maybe finish what we've, what we need to get done in Dawson Ranch with the suggestions that you've made? I think those are good suggestions. And North Ninth?
We do have, we do have some cost savings discussions that we'll have about the WPA and the Rhodes Avenue Channel, yes. Yes, I, I will, I will say again, because I said this way back when we were doing the prioritizations, you know, we, we had $125 million worth of projects that we, we trimmed down to the current list, and there was a lot of discussion at that time on whether we should just do one project and finish one project, so it, so it had some effect. And, and that was, that was decided against at the time, and it was, it was felt that it was better to spread it around with the possibility that there, there may not be as much effect in doing so. But what I'm hearing from Mr. Meisner and Ashley Smith is tonight, we should, regardless of that, we should keep the allocations the same, and build, and build as much as we can at those sites within that allocation.
I mean, I realize there's this issue of lack of trust and faith, that we said, this is what we're going to do with this much money, and that's been our intentions, but I think, I think if we at least keep the original allocations there, and do with what we, do what we can with it, that's better than reshuffling the deck. I think if we reshuffle the deck, then we've got another element of trust that, well, you didn't do what you said you was going to do anyways, because now you're changing the game again, and I, I think, the only stability here is saying, hey, this is what we decided with it originally, let's do what we can with it. We know that we're going to be short. I mean, construction is crazy right now.
Yeah, and I understand that. I was just giving, giving confirmation that that was the sentiment, so.
I mean, that's my feeling. The, just, just to add on to that a little bit, and I, and I totally understand that, and I see that there's good and valid reasons to not reshuffle the deck, but, but what about unintended consequences? So if we're, if we're cutting back scopes to, or, you know, stopping before we finish a project, are we going to create, are we going to create new flooding where there is none now? I mean, you know?
That for sure is what we are going to not do. So that is, that's been part of the discussion in Dawson Ranch with, with the HOA, and that's going to be part of the discussion with the WPA Channel as well, is that we're, we're not going to do anything that's going to cause us further problems. So that's, that's, that is a deal breaker, for sure. Yeah.
Plus some legal issues, right?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, my turn?
Okay.
Thank you. I think we should stay the course. I believe that Dawson Ranch is, is, we're going to get as close as possible to finishing a project. Let's face it, North Ninth Street, getting it to Mid- Let's face it, North Ninth Street, getting into Mystic or Route, where are we gonna go, isn't finished, and probably won't be for a while. But I really think we should stay the course and stick with the Dawson Ranch. That, to me, in my business, that's where I see the most devastation and probably the best money spent for now. Yeah, sure, we're gonna have a lot of water running down Ninth Street, goes away, not a lot of damage, but Dawson Ranch area and Wolf Park, damage. So I, I think we should stay the course. Okay?
Are we gonna have more discussion about East Main and Roads?
Yep, that's where we're going next.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, so the Abbey Basin, Northeast Canyon Basin, so that's the Rhodes Avenue Channel and the WPA Channel, so just, and so that, this handout, that's what we're talking about now, is those two pages now. So the intent there, when we prioritize those, was to relieve the flooding, we'll talk about Abbey first, was relieve the flooding that happens at the intersection of East Main and Roads from there, south, near the Humane Society and the Oil Creek Ditch. And basically, what we're looking at there was upsizing some culverts and making some channel improvements. And then the other project was the WPA Channel, which is, begin, begins, the headwaters there, the headwaters of the project would begin there at True Value in East Main, and then head south to the river, where we have, the fair amount of that is an existing box culvert. So we were looking at increasing capacity within there, and then also making some channel improvements and some, and some culvert changes. So our consultant team has been working on data collection there, surveying, they're doing some analysis, they've been doing some preliminary designing, and, and looking at some preliminary costs. They're at about, about thirty percent, or a little less than thirty percent now is where they're at with design. Based on what they know now, they, they're projecting that we are not gonna be able to build the, what we initially anticipated from that study that we did for both of those channels. And so they, you know, they are doing the same things that we're talking about with the Dawson Ranch project. They're looking at different ways they can value engineer that, possibly reduce the capacity of what we were anticipating, yet still making a significant improvement. And so, but again, their, their focus, what I've asked them to focus on and prioritize is, is what's happening at the upper end of both of those reaches, which is where all that water leaves the channel. Specifically, it, you know, from Fifteenth Street to the south there, through the quarry property, and then also on Rhodes Avenue there, what happens at the Rover Trax East Main and the Humane Society. So I think, Tom and James, you wanna speak a little bit to the exhibits and kind of explain to them what we're thinking now, as far as, where we, maybe we restarted, what we're thinking now? You wanna go through that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Adam, and thanks for your time tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, I'm Tom Browning, this is James Potano with Atkins. And referring to the two sheets in front of you, we can start with the WPA Channel, but before we dive into any details, maybe what I should say is that, based upon our preliminary engineering and some of the trends we're seeing in the construction industry and some of the costs we're coming up with based upon similar relevant projects up and down the Front Range, and trying to get ahead of this, because we're further behind on the design than some of the other projects you've been hearing about, so we had a great opportunity, and I credit Adam for bringing us together to talk about this while it's early enough in the process to, you know, really evaluate and hopefully make some meaningful changes. But our goal is to help the city maximize the use of these dollars and minimize the flooding in town. That is absolutely our number-one goal. So along those lines, what we wanted to do was talk with you about some of the stormwater improvements. So for example, on WPA, Adam did a great job of, of talking about how we're gonna look at the northern or the upstream portion of this. There's some obvious constrictions and flooding issues with culverts. Underneath the railroad, there's a series of corrugated metal pipe culverts that, that right now are not very efficient. We can do some things there that are budget-friendly, that will help improve the efficiency of those culverts, perhaps add more capacity with a new culvert, take care of some grading problems. There's a headcut that's occurring right now that will eventually undermine East Main. It's, it's really trying to fix what's there, improve the drainage capacity, and make sure that some of the ponding issues and overflow issues are reduced to the extent possible. Right now, we're looking at evaluating the, the box culvert. It's a thirteen-hundred-foot-plus box culvert, four foot by six foot, that basically starts at the Oil Creek Ditch and goes south to the Arkansas River. We just recently got permission from the landowners. They were very gracious in meeting with us and talking about access permissions, so the surveyors are now going back out to collect information that'll help us with our hydraulic evaluations. And that'll be really instructive to find out what those true capacities are once we obtain that information. So in a nutshell, I think we can make some really meaningful strides for you at WPA. May not be the original entire package that we had talked about through the master planning process and through what you talked about with the Citizen Committee, but in the end, our goal is to do no harm, first of all, and improve everything we can with what we have. So along those lines, I'm gonna flip over to the Rhodes Project, similar kind of situation there. With the current drainage underneath East Main, there are some pretty severe capacity restrictions there as well. We can easily open that up with additional culverts underneath that road and alleviate some of the flooding problems there. Same thing with the open channel going south along Rhodes Avenue, there would be a new inverted siphon in Oil Creek Ditch, as well as improvements at each of the road crossings on White Pine Court, Spartan, and Yoot. I believe we would not provide a crossing at Railroad Street. I think that one, if I'm not mistaken, will be abandoned in place and continue the open channel through there. So what that would do is give you nice capacity from just south of RGB down to the river with a substantial improvement compared to what's there today. So while we have tried to scale back and do the value engineering and find very cost-effective measures for getting the most capacity for the money, I think with the roads, we feel very confident that with the designs coming up and what we have projected on cost, we can still do something that's gonna be very helpful. So that is, kinda Rhodes in a nutshell. One thing I should mention is we've included a pretty high forty percent contingency, and we're also using CDOT data for the costs, and both of which are probably higher than maybe industry standard for the localization, but what we're seeing, not only with our other clients and what we've been talking about so far with bids coming in, we're making sure that we're being realistic without trying to undercut ourselves on the ultimate cost. Now, as time goes on with timing and what bids might actually come in compared to the engineer's estimate, you know, maybe we'll be better off, but we didn't wanna short-thrift it, and we wanted to make sure that we were being as realistic as possible. So that's why at this point, we're here to, you know, let you know that there's, there's a chance that the, the full project that was originally anticipated may not be possible, and just trying to be transparent with the kinds of things that we can do with the budget. So I think I'll stop there and either turn it back over to Adam or open it for questions.
Yeah, so there, there again, we're just looking for an affirmation to proceed, as discussed, and, and answer any questions.
Mr. Meisner?
Oh, my, I, my first question goes with the Rhodes Avenue Channel. Where the red line stops? What is that? Is that the end of our improvement there?
Yeah, so the, the red line that you see, and I assume you're talking about it, the very southern end where it says, "Transition to Natural Open Channel."
Right.
That's the, kind of the structured end of the project, and then from there, there's currently an open channel that then empties into a wetlands area and into the river. So we are basically transitioning the grades because of the regrading of the channel and the increasing of the capacity along Rhodes to Yoot Street, and then transitioning down to a point where it goes back into a natural state. And that, the end of the red line may not be exact, because we still have some engineering to do, but it basically shows you the transition from the, the structured part of the project to the natural part of the project.
I assume this has been addressed, but we're talking about increased capacity and all the other things, but at the end of your red line, I happen to see a little house sitting there. It's not little, but is that, is that channel unquestionably gonna be able to handle whatever increased capacity we're talking about?
Pretty big channel.
I don't have any idea what it looks like.
Yeah, pretty good-sized channel, plus all the flows that we're talking about right now get there today. That's, that's, that's where we get down into the floodplain. And so we, we're also trying to avoid getting into the floodplain in the wetland area, which is more costly and more permitting and those, and more engineering and those sorts of things. So we're trying to avoid that, knowing that how that naturally works today is, seems to be working pretty well. But the restrictions upstream at the Rover Trax in East Main.
But today, that drainage could take six hours, where with improvements, it could take an hour for that water to get down there to?
Probably more like, probably more like thirty minutes versus ten minutes, but yes.
I mean, we've got a lot of water that's being held up, that's slowly moving down that system now, whereas with the improvements, that water's gonna move pretty rapidly, and I just get concerned that that area at the end of your red line is capable of handling that volume, which I don't have any idea what it looks like, but there's a home sitting down there.
Absolutely. And that, again, would be Atkins' job to show us that that's not gonna have any harm there. That would be a requirement.
Ms. Smith?
Can you go into some more detail about the, the new suggestions for improving at East Roads or East Main and Roads with the, and the railroad crossing and all of that? 'Cause I know that's really the, the biggest issue right there.
Sure. Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll let, I'll let James answer the question on that one.
How's it going? So basically, what we're looking to do across the railroad and East Main there is run three, three larger pipes in a more linear fashion versus what you have currently, and basically taking out your existing infrastructure that's running underneath East Main, then towards, underneath the railroad then, and then over by the Humane Society, and back into our channel. Basically, taking out that infrastructure so that we can better, basically move the water through that area a lot better, more efficiently.
Will it move so much better and more efficiently that we can open one of the pipes from the Abbey Basin across Highway 50, so we alleviate more flooding up on the north side?
So currently, I don't believe we're looking at any changes or improvements north of Highway 50. So all of the water that's being modeled in the hydrology models that would get down to this drainage point, we're modeling those flows to go underneath the railroad and Main, and then again, down through the, the open channel and the culverts along roads.
So Tom, what she's referring to, so there's three culverts under the highway now, and two of those are closed. And the, so yes, the, the, the number-one priority in this project is to open those up.
Right.
And create that, and create that relief there. And that's why he was talking about the matching the three culverts going under the railroad in East Main, so those would be opened up, yes.
Okay, so yeah, that's a really good deal.
But those are an existing improvement, it'd just be a matter of unplugging them.
Just unplugging them.
Yeah.
Has there been any contact with the railroads? I know that's...
Yeah, so we have a specialist on our staff who's a railroad expert, believe it or not, and we've got a number of projects where this one individual makes contact with the railroad. So we've been provided the railroad's current technical guidelines, and to the extent that our designs are in conformance with the normal guidelines of the railroad, it makes the approval process much quicker and streamlined. If we were to propose anything that deviated from their guidelines, then that's a, that's a conversation and a meeting and special fees that they would charge for reviews. And so our goal is to work within their guidelines and make sure that, you know, again, keeping the costs down and keeping the process as streamlined as possible. So the short answer is yes, we've been in contact with the railroad.
And if, and if we're able to accomplish that within the guidelines, what's the timeframe to getting their thumbs up and approval to move forward?
You know, that's a really good question. I can find out for you and get back to you. I don't have a number or a number of days or a date in my head, but all I know is that this is something that our individual on our staff has done many, many times, and so it's a familiar process to him, and I can find out and get back to you, maybe through Adam, what the, the answer is.
Sure, 'cause that'll make a difference on our timing for this project, right?
Sure, absolutely.
What kind of timing are you predicting to be able to start on this project?
So because of the basin flows that are in both of these sites, we're, we are looking forward next winter, so we wanna have these ready to build.
Okay.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from, from an engineering perspective, if you have basin-wide improvements that you need to make, I think, from that perspective, you'd wanna start at the, at the river, at the discharge point, and move back, move up with your, with your improvements, so that, so that what you're doing, it's so that if you improve things in the headwater area, all of a sudden, you're gonna have a whole rush of water that already can't be handled by a current system. So, you know, from an engineering perspective, you wanna start at the discharge point, make your improvements going back. And, and that leads to my question. The, we are, we are trying to improve things. Is there, have we thought of doing it in a phased manner? In other words, it's, it's kinda the do-over question. If we put, let's say that, just for example, just to pull something out of the air to discuss, let's say that, that the engineering says we need to really handle everything, a forty-eight-inch culvert, but we, but we can afford a thirty-six. Has there been any thought of putting in smaller than, than what the engineering says with an idea towards, in the future, if other funds become available, to trying to redo? The idea, the idea there would be that you try to make things better for everybody as quick as you can, not necessarily curing all the problems, but, but making things better in something maybe that you can afford.
I would say that's absolutely what we're doing. In every one of these projects, we've, we have taken on that phased concept. And you're right about the discharge versus the headwaters, and it's, the difference is, is what we, for example, on the WPA Channel is, we, we have a suspicion at this point, at the thirty percent level, that we're not utilizing our existing infrastructure downstream to the capacity it should be used, which is why we're having a problem. Same thing at the, at the Abbey Channel. The, the existing channel, the existing channel along Rhodes Avenue is a pretty good-sized channel, but it's unimproved, and so it, it needs some stabilizations and so forth, which, which is, is part of the cost. But the, but the overflow, it's, it is handling flows, even though not perfectly, and it's not perfectly stabilized beyond there, but it's handling the flows to the extent of that-sized storm. But the infrastructure at, at East Main is total junk. So it, and it's, it doesn't, it's, it's like the pinch in the straw right there, which is why we have to have those two culverts closed under the highway. So you're absolutely right there, but we think that, you know, if, really, the direction we're taking right now is if we make those small, smaller, they're not small, but smaller improvements in those locations, that we think the rest of it downstream will be more, more able to handle it.
Thank you.
And that was the key to be able to get the, the surveying done on the existing box culvert, 'cause it was built in the WPA days, and we didn't know anything about it except for where it discharges and where the hole is at the, at the upper end. So now we are getting, collecting some very real important data that will be able to give us a much better hydraulic calculation on what it can do. So for example, if, you know, if you've got this big culvert, but right now, the inlet to it has been modified or not maintained properly or something, and there's a restriction there, then that pipe is not seeing and doing for us what it could be doing. And so it could be as simple as an improvement at just the inlet.
Mr. Meisner?
So on, on the Rhodes Avenue, the, the new, I assume, culvert that would go under the railroad and the highway, or not the highway, but East Main. and the highway, or not the highway, but East Main, what would that look like going underneath East Main? How would that get there? Are you opening up East Main?
So if you, so if you look like, if you look at that red line, so that would be, that's drawing a straight line from the culverts that already come perpendicular into the highway, and they would go perpendicular into East Main, where right now it makes a series of turns near the-
Yeah, but I'm talking about physically.
So physically, because of cost and because of requirements of the railroad, it would probably be a jack and bore situation where you're pushing those, those pipes underneath it without an open cut.
Through, through the railroad and through Main?
Probably both because of the proximity of both of them. It's, there's that skew crossing. And so it probably makes sense to-
Okay.
Probably do as, as much as possible.
Ms. Smith?
You guys alluded to this a little bit about property owners and their cooperation. We did have some property owners come to city council, very worried and concerned about surveying and work being done. So that has been alleviated in their concerns?
Yes, we met with them, with the consultant last week, and it was a very good meeting. And, and we'll be reaching out to them even further as we do surveying. And, and for now, it looks like that, that we're moving forward with them.
Okay. And my next question actually is for Commissioner Payne. I don't want to put you in the hot seat, but as-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have to ask. I have to do an ask. And that is, as these numbers come in, I know the county's already been incredibly cooperative to commit $200,000 towards this project. If it comes in even higher, we want to see, I mean, this is probably the most, to me personally, this is one of the most important projects to see, to get done. Is there a possibility that the county could participate a little bit further in making sure it happens?
Well, obviously, I can't stand up here and promise you anything, but-
You could.
We would like to be in on the conversation, that's for sure. We're budgeting some, well, we're still in budget talks, obviously. It's that time of year. But we are putting some significant dollars towards stormwater. We do have to do some work in the river with the Recreation District on their, on that levee that almost collapsed. And so we do have to do that. So we would like to be in on the conversation, that's for sure. And then I think what we need to do is talk to all three commissioners and the county manager, and let's come up with what we need for next year on this. On Ute Street, where it makes the curve there south, that is county's responsibility. And we cleaned that out two years ago, and it's a fairly deep, big channel right there. And Jim's question about the house there, that actually is elevated, and the water actually would go east in the wetlands. And the one it might affect would be Ralph Gulliver down off the map here, if it affects anybody. I'm not even sure if it would affect him, because it gets so spread out there before it finally goes into the river. But I think that would be the natural flow of that. It wouldn't go directly to the river because you have a pretty good sized dike, or a levee, I should say. I'm not sure what the terminology is on that. But it's good size where that road is, right by the river. And that's what blocks it there and would make it go east on the, to the wetlands. But getting back to your original question, this, you and I have had several conversations on this. This is near and dear to my heart, too. This, this would help a whole lot of people, especially the 2013 flood that we had that flooded the bowling alley and then south Sherwood and all that area. So this would be, this would help a lot of people. So we definitely want to have the conversation and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And also thank you for already cleaning out the ditch area on the south side, because that, that's key to being able to proceed with the rest of the project. What's the timeline on getting those numbers? Since we are in the middle of budget talks, at what point can we, we need to cinch up some budget conversations with the city and the county for allocations?
I would think we're still okay, especially since we're planning a, a late 2020 project. So, I mean, even worst case, it could be a 21 budget discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Fisher, do you have something to comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind everybody that when we did the 2A reconstruction on East Main Street, we cut the jack and bore for the water line out, and that needs to be done at the same time while they're working on, in this intersection. So Adam, you need to include that as, as a water enterprise fund expense.
Yes, and Bob Hartsman knows that. And we, we, that's included in our capital improvement plan for the budget, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Meisner?
So back to the WPA. I'm going to say back. Are we talking about this, it's this potential new culvert? The dotted red line or dashed red line?
Right. So similar scenario that we have happening over at East Main and Roads is, we've got water that's trying to turn all kinds of corners, which it doesn't do well. It doesn't do well, it doesn't perform hydraulically very well that way. And it also dumps a lot of debris and sediment when it does that. And so one of the things Atkins is looking at is a more direct connection from west to east from the 15th Street drainage and what we call the Water Street drainage into the WPA channel, so it doesn't have to make so many twists and turns.
And that, that would be a culvert there?
Culvert or a combination of culvert, open, open channel, yes. And they've been, again, they've been talking to the railroad a little bit, and we're working through the railroad guidelines. And then they've also had, had a few discussions, or at least one discussion, with the TSACs, who are the property owners.
That's, yeah, that's-
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have more? Would you, would you, we need your name, too, Mr. Sturica? Mr. Mike Sturica? No, go ahead.
Mike Sturica. I live at 676 North 19th Street. Two questions for you. On the Rhodes Avenue, I'm very familiar with that wetlands area. I've hunted down in there. There is no direct outlet to the river that I know of out of that, that I've ever seen.
Where at?
The wetlands area on the south end of the roads. Like I said, I've hunted ducks and geese and doves down there for years, and I've never seen a direct outlet for that wetlands to the river.
I think the point that it's not going to increase the amount of flow necessarily, but it may get there quicker.
Yeah.
Right.
So, but that's the old, that escarpment there, that's an old riverbed.
Right.
And I think it flows into it.
Yeah, it used to be an old Oxbow there, and, yep.
The other comment I had, if that box culvert that runs from the Oil Creek ditch south to the river isn't sufficient size enough. If you look to the northeast of the red dot where the, says evaluate inlet capacity of Oil Creek ditch, that brown area, which is, I'm guessing is TSAC property, is trash. There is all sorts of old equipment, just it's, it's a boneyard for them. Is that a possibility of a possible pond, a retention pond, that would hold some water and release slowly through that culvert? That was my, my comments.
We've, yeah, we, we can ask that question, take a look at that. That's one of the things we talked about between the rail spurs possibly. So, yeah, we'll-
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
We'll throw it out there, yeah.
Thanks.
Good questions. Mr. Meisner?
What's the size of that? Isn't that, is that an 18-inch culvert that goes from Vine Street down?
To the river?
Yeah.
No, that's where that large box culvert is, existing box culvert, eight by six.
I think it's a six by four.
Six by four.
Six by four.
So basically, between the two red dots and then all the way to the river is an enclosed concrete box culvert.
There's an 18-inch further east, west, right?
Uh, I think the-
There's one over by George's property.
Doug's here. There's a, there's a culvert that crosses, goes down Hamilton Road. I think that's an 18 or 24.
Yeah, yeah. That historically is-
That drains 11th Street.
Has some issues with plugging and-
Uh, yeah, it does a little better, since we've done some maintenance a while back and-
Couple of years ago.
Put in some manholes, yeah.
Yeah.
Is George's house right here?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, come on up, Doug. Doug, Shane, Shane.
He's, he's got to be over here. I think. Maybe he is. No.
Doug Cohen, 1102 Vine Street. They did work on it. I can't say it made a heck of a lot of difference. We still have rivers going right down the road. I think it's a, is it 18 or 24, Adam?
I thought it was 18.
Yeah, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
And you're, you're on Fraser, right?
No, I'm on Vine, bottom of 11th and Vine.
Okay.
Yeah, he's just off this picture.
Anyway, the city did, they did make an attempt. They did do work there. And I'm very appreciative of that. But to say it solved the problem, no way, no. No, it didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And you're talking about the box culvert supposedly from, goes down Fraser Avenue?
Actually, actually Doug and Jim are talking about a different-
It's over here.
Drainage. Yeah.
Oh.
It's off to the left. It's, it's not even on the map.
Okay.
There's an 18-inch that runs from Vine to the river.
Actually, it runs all the way from Main Street to the river, of various sizes. But that's that whole drainage from-
And there's a cleanout about halfway or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a number of inlets and cleanouts.
Okay. Do you have more, Adam?
So, yeah, if, if you guys are good with what Atkins has presented here tonight, we'll let them proceed and we'll bring you back. What do you guys think the next step, next status where we, we come back and bring them more information? What level do you think then?
I would say as we approach the 70% level, we have a really good time to do that.
Okay, so early, early springish?
Early, so first quarter 2020.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so just to wrap this up, we're going to go ahead and go forward with the Dawson Ranch information. That should come out pretty quickly, discuss it with-
Yep.
Contractors to-
Yep, we'll, we'll fine tune all that, bundle it back up as a rebid and get that back out.
And you're going to be looking forward to the bidding on Ninth Street as well?
Ninth Street will be out to bid in early 2020, January.
For a project in 2020?
Correct.
Okay. Hopefully, we can do a project in late to early 2020 for Dawson Ranch area?
Yes. So order of things, we'll probably, we'll be awarding, we'll be looking for an award for Dawson Ranch a little bit before Ninth Street to be ready.
And you're going to keep us aware?
Absolutely. Yep.
All right.
And Ninth Street's a complete project.
Complete project, yeah.
We're not talking about staged there. It's-
Correct. Yeah.
It's to mistake.
Water, stormwater, the whole works at one time.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience? Well, let's do it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for everybody coming.